Good evening. It is Monday, January 27th, 2018. It is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the second meeting of the month of January for the Speedway Town Council. My name's Jeff Matthews and I am Town Council President. I'd like to introduce those that are with me this evening. To my far right, Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To her left, Counselor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
To my left, Vice President David Lindsay.
Good evening.
To his left, Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
To his left, Town Manager Jacob Blaisel.
Good evening, Speedway.
Clerk Treasurer Monty Combs.
Good evening.
And our Town Attorney, Bob Clutter.
Good evening.
The agenda has been posted and we will be following that this evening. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to have our City-County Counselor, Janice McIndry, please come up and lead us in the anthem, please.
And as you say the pledge, think about the true meaning and what a great country we have. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Janice. Item number two, minutes, the approval of Town Council Meeting, January 8th, 2018. Any corrections or comments? Seeing none, those will be approved. Item number three, approval of the memorandum for January 8th executive session. Those two have been distributed. Any corrections or comments? Hearing none, those two will be approved. Item number four, appointment to the boards and commissions. This one is for the Speedway Community Development Corporation. We have one position open for the CDC and at this time we'd like nominations, please.
Denominate Maggie Bishop.
Move we close the nominations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, we would like to welcome Maggie Bishop to the CDC.
Jeff, if I could, I'd thank Ron Sears for his years of service on that board.
Absolutely.
He resigned since, basically, near the end of the year and so that's why the position came open, but he served for several years and we appreciate his service.
Sure. Thanks, Gary. Item number five, Ordinance 1302. That is the ordinance establishing a $2.50 per month yard waste fee. That is on first reading. Jacob, please.
I always get the fun jobs, yes. So the yard waste fee that we're looking at, and I'll just, as you mentioned, this is on first reading, I just wanted to note that the plan, the intent, I believe, of council is to go ahead and do a first reading and a second reading, even though you could pass it as a 5-0 vote tonight by statute, as we now know from our Town Attorney, that could make it then an ordinance, but I believe that we're going to go ahead and do two readings, make sure people have opportunity to comment if they would like. So on the yard waste ordinance, I have created a few slides to go through. Just want to help folks understand what we're doing, a little bit of background. So if the Cable Commission could pull up the first slide there.
Okay, great. So, looking through this, just a quick program overview, you know, here's what we're talking about, here's what we're doing. This is the curbside yard waste pickup program that Speedway residents benefit from. So this is, every week you put your yard waste down on the curb and it gets collected. This is done by the town of Speedway, the street department specifically. So it is town employees, it is town trucks, gas vehicle, whole nine yards is done by the town. Thirty-three hundred forty-two residents benefit from this. It is really households, no businesses. I'm going to say most apartment complexes are not eligible. There's a couple of minor exceptions where we handle their trash and recycle, but essentially if you are signed up for the town's trash recycling program, you are a part of this program, you're receiving the service. Of course, it makes yard waste easier to deal with, makes co-compliance easier. And then, you know, I want to point out that it's good for homeowners, you personally, but it also benefits you, even if you don't use it as much or have as much yard waste, your neighbors do, and so it helps them kind of maintain and upkeep the neighborhood so that all property values are protected. And so it's, in general, just a really good program. Schedule, of course, is it's done weekly, as I mentioned. It starts at the very beginning of April, goes through the first full week of December, and then, of course, they do the Christmas tree pickup in January, and the program runs technically year-round. If you want to take your yard waste to the street department, the yard waste truck is there and you can utilize the service there. Going to the next slide. Let's talk about the service funding that we have right now. So it's currently funded from the Motor Vehicle Highway account. These are predominantly gas tax revenues. There's some odd stuff like, you know, special fuel taxes, some B&amp;V fees going to it, but it's part of the overall Indiana road funding formula, and that's how we get our MVH dollars. And so we have been utilizing these funds to pay for the yard waste, the costs of it. Last year, there's House and Rural Act 1002, and that was a pretty significant piece of legislation. That is kind of, was called kind of the road funding bill, and it most notably increased the gas tax, and that's kind of what attracted a lot of the headlines. But of course, we all know that legislation doesn't pass with just one sentence. There's always, you know, it's a stack of papers, and part of what was embedded in that was some additional restrictions and scrutiny on how those funds are utilized. And, long story short, legislature wants to make sure that as much as those funds as possible is going towards building roads, maintaining roads and streets. And while Speedway has been pretty vigilant in using those funds for roads, this caused us to kind of take a review of how we're spending those funds, and this was kind of the one item that we looked at and said, you know, with the change in legislation, with the additional scrutiny, what's not going to really qualify anymore that we can see? And this was the one expenditure where we looked at and said, you know, this isn't what the legislature is intending us to use these funds for. So if we're going to continue this, then we need to start looking for another source of funding. And looking at it, the proposal now in front of us is to add, and I'm going to go through the numbers here on the next slide, but it comes out to a $2.50 per month fee that would be charged to residents. And I just kind of want to make a quick comment. I mean, this isn't, I don't want anybody blaming the legislature. There were some communities throughout the state that were taking, I'll just say, extreme liberties with how they were utilizing those funds. Legislators rightfully were tired of kind of hearing about how they're not funding local roads when they fund them and the funds go to pay for all sorts of other things that weren't intended for the gas tax purpose. So it's not so much to blame the state here, just want to make that clear, but it does mean that we've got to adapt and kind of live within the new wording of the legislation. So we go to the next slide and we're kind of getting into the dollars and cents here. I'm not going to go line by line here, but we have taken a pretty comprehensive view of what this program cost the town to administer. Everything from the actual labor to the cost of the truck and the life and appreciation of the truck, getting down to number of households and the monthly fee of coming up with that annual revenue, less of 5% assumed delinquency, that's just if folks move out or just don't pay. Monty comes out, goes after them as best he can, but sometimes we have a little bit of loss there. And I just want to note while we're talking about the cost here, that we have in the past tried to bid this out and it's come in more expensive than us just doing it in-house. So that's something that's been explored, but hasn't worked out. Go to the next and last slide, just to kind of clarify the implementation. So we're looking at starting this this year in April as the service comes online in 2018. The fee would then be paid monthly and would then become year-round. We sort of played around with the idea of, well, you're not really getting a service in February and March, so maybe we just allocate it over the other months, but just from a logistics standpoint, it wasn't going to be worth the headaches. And I think, you know, for me, and I did run this by the Solid Waste Board, the consensus was, no, let's just have it at a flat fee that's year-round. You don't have to worry about this little, this charge, you know, coming in and out. And then, the funds obviously don't go away, so the funds from MVH will then be utilized for local roads and streets. So just to kind of summarize this up, the current funding source for yard waste program, it can no longer be used for yard waste purposes due to the changes in the state statute. If we're going to continue this program, we're going to need to find a new funding source, and the proposed replacement is to do, add a $2.50 per fee, $2.50 fee per month to the monthly bills that folks are already receiving for your trash and utilities. And as I mentioned, this did, I did run this by the Solid Waste Board, and, you know, I think their reaction was kind of similar to mine. It's, for the cost of that service to have this every week is a pretty good deal, and for folks that are in the workforce and, you know, even have this cost, the monthly cost for utilities automatically deducted, they're probably not even going to notice that this happened. But we are very conscious that there are people that live in Speedway that are retired and are on fixed incomes, and, you know, they're going to notice this to varying degrees. And so we try to be very conscious, and it might seem a little bit, I think it did to the Solid Waste Board, a little bit of overkill, like we're going through all this in the details, but we, you know, to do something like this, we take it very seriously and try to avoid as much as we can and keep the costs low. But it's a great program and it helps, like I said, not just the folks that are cleaning up their yard, as I know everybody up here does, but helps your neighbor do so as well and keeps the neighborhoods looking clean. So with that, I will open it up to any questions or comments.
Need a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion. We adopt ordinance 1302 on first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1302 on first reading. Are there any comments in the audience? Any from council?
Question I have, Jacob, we talked about this kind of privately, but I want to make sure we ask this question in public. So roughly, it's a $100,000 cost that we have today in doing this, and that's what we're trying to recover because the state's not allowing, not allowing us to do, to pay for this the way we have been previously. So that $100,000 that we now get through MVH and a little bit more, the increase that came about when the state legislatures changed the, actually included some language, more specific language that is causing us to do this, but that $100,000 that we're spending today and that we're still going to get from MVH dollars, what are we doing with that now, going forward?
So, you know, obviously, we haven't passed this yet, so we haven't necessarily planned
on this funding in our budget, but those funds will then be made available for our roads and streets programs. So, you know, the money doesn't disappear. It's just going to go into our road funding plan and program.
In 2018 budget, and I know, I want to say it was in December, we, maybe it was our last meeting?
It was our last meeting.
Last meeting, we approved hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of paving to roads and some other work that's being done. So those dollars, in theory, would go to pay for that, because we're doing more this year than maybe we did last year. Okay. Just want to be sure we get that out in the public.
Yeah. Wendell's always been able to spend money, in very good and productive ways, no doubt.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0 on first reading. Second reading will be?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. So if you have any questions, please feel free to contact any one of us. We'll be more than happy to help. Item number six, this is a public hearing for Resolution 2018-02, a resolution authorizing application submission and local match commitment. Jacob?
Yes, Mr. President. So this is the second public hearing we've had on this. This is the wastewater grant that we are applying for to make various improvements. We've got above-ground clarifier tanks, we have a filter system. All of that needs to be replaced and repaired, and we have our grant administrator, Mike Klein-Peter. If you would like to kind of talk about?
Hang on, just a second.
Okay. So that's the introduction of it, and any questions on that?
No, thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for questions at 7:15.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening. My name's Mike Klein-Peter with Klein-Peter Consulting Group. I'm an OKRA-certified grant administrator. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to discuss the town's application for funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We're going to be applying for a $500,000 grant. We'll have a local match of $478,000 from the wastewater depreciation fund, which would mean we're going to have a total project cost of $978,000. We submitted our proposal to OKRA in December. OKRA reviewed our proposal and determined that our project was eligible and a site visit was conducted in December. Our application is due on February 9th. We will know in April whether we are funded or not. We want to make sure that citizens of the town are fully informed and have the opportunity to voice concerns or support for their project and ask any questions they may have. Funds available for this program are limited and it is competitive. We're competing against about 20 other communities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jacob. He kind of gave us some highlights of what we're going to do, but just to tell us exactly what we're going to do, we're going to rehab some stuff, some new pumps, a boiler, along with some other things.
Yeah. No, that's a pretty good description of it, and some of it is, we've been making repairs to certain components of the plant over the years, but it's just kind of banded after banded, and the facility's getting old to the point where it really makes sense now to make long-term repairs and restructure what we have. And some of it is also, the equipment is going out, and then in order for us to try to make it work, then we end up spending a lot of man-hours to clear out filters that we shouldn't be doing, and creates a lot of issues from a personnel side as well. So it's a half-million-dollar grant would go a very long way at our plant, really set us up well. There's, I believe, is it, Mike, five years that after we do this, we will be no longer able to go back? Is that?
Yeah, so it used to be seven. I think they've changed it since then, but you can't come back for a wastewater specific. You can come in for other OKRA programming, but not wastewater. So yeah, I think that was seven. They've taken it down to five years, but I think we've got a pretty comprehensive project that's going to address a lot of the needs out there.
Yeah. So don't want to promise that Norm won't come back for anything, but this would put us in really great shape for the next five years and be a good investment for us.
Excellent, thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:18. Moving on to item number seven, Resolution 2018-02, a resolution authorizing application submission and local match commitment. Do I need a motion?
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Need to make a motion first.
I'll move that we approve Resolution 2018-2 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-02. Are there any questions from the public? Counselor?
Just curious if this, and I'm not sure who to address this question to, so whoever can answer, but is this an annual process? And I guess I'm asking that, so if we are not awarded, is this something that we could apply for again next year?
Yes, so OKRA usually has two rounds a year. They've been April and October. This time, it's April, and the next one will be in July, and then there'll be an actual, a third round in November or December. So if we were not eligible for funding, or if we didn't receive funding, we would basically have to hold two additional public hearings and then we could apply again. We've done all the groundwork, basically, to just reapply then.
Okay. Great, thank you.
We actually won one this year related to housing, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes 5-0. Item number five, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Monty, take it away, sir.
Oh, claims of, I'm sorry, I thought we had a?
Oh, did I miss one?
03.
Number eight.
Oh, number eight, sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
Tim got a little worried there.
Let me get to item number eight first, Tim, sorry. Resolution 2018-03, a resolution for the town of Speedway approving Resolution 2017-14 of the Speedway Redevelopment Corporation. Tim, would you like to come up, please?
I almost took away my one love of public speaking.
Yep.
Darn it. Thank you. So now is the second step in the process for any time we amend our TIF districts. We have a proposed amendment to our allocation areas. This is more of a cleanup of our existing TIFs than anything else. So this resolution was first passed as declaratory resolution by the SRC in December, and now before the council, if approved tonight, the tax impact statements will be mailed out to all the overlapping taxing districts, and then we will have a public hearing and consideration of the confirmatory resolution at the next SRC meeting. So this resolution does three things. It cleans up our personal property TIF collection more into what was intended. They didn't have all the proper names of the businesses that they're trying to capture for personal property. It also removes several properties from the allocation area along 10th Street, the north side of 10th Street, from the Big Woods parking lot to Lynnhurst. It removed those from the, it leaves them in the economic development area, but takes them out of the allocation area. And the third thing it does is it amends our economic development plan for the TIF district. So as projects get completed, as new projects come on, as we change our strategy, we have to update that to make sure that the projects that we're doing are reflected in the economic development plan for the TIF. So again, this is the second step in the process. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We accept Resolution 2018-03.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-03. Are there any comments from the public? Any from council?
So, Tim, just to clarify, the parcels that are listed on there and the names that they've sold, it does not affect anything because it's based off the parcel number?
Correct, yes. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Now, number nine.
Okay.
Approval of claims and utility adjustments, Monty.
Okay. Claims submitted for this period, for the period of January the 6th through January the 19th. Again, as I usually say, they're fairly typical on expenses. You see on page one, though, there's three there that shows the amount was zeros. I wrote in the amounts. We had some kind of a glitch. We're trying to figure out. The number on the right side is 17. That's the PO number on the encumbered money that the cable guys did. So those amounts actually were what were paid, not zero amounts. So other than that, normal as usual. I appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims presented as by Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims as presented. Are there any comments from the public? Any from council? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. Monty?
Utility adjustments are before you as well for the same period of time, from January the 6th through January the 19th. A total of, I think the total is $147.
Yes.
For the period, and appreciate your approval as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We accept the utility adjustments as presented by our Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the utility adjustments as presented by our Clerk Treasurer, Monty Combs. Are there any comments from the public? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. Monty, do you have anything else, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item number 10 is a report from Town Manager, Jacob.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A few updates. The letter map provision for the flood plane that we've been talking about, in the last meeting, I was able to give an update that we were approved by the state, and I indicated that that needed to go on then to FEMA, and happy to say that we were able to turn that around quickly, get it repackaged, and it is now officially with FEMA. I don't know if they did anything with it today. I think they were shut down, but, you know, I guess that they've got another three weeks. But assuming the government stays open, we hope that FEMA will be working on that quickly. Couple of announcements related to Indianapolis Power and Light. They're going to be in the area trimming trees, and they usually do a pretty good job of contacting homeowners, letting people know what's going on, leaving hangers and that sort of thing. Other utility companies have not done that, and they've just sort of started trimming trees, and then our office starts getting phone calls, wondering why the town's doing it. And so I just want folks to know that IPL is going to be in the neighborhood trimming trees up around power lines. If you have any concerns, you can contact our office. We're happy to get you in touch with them, but they're usually pretty good about having their information posted on the website. So just be on the lookout for that. And then, we're going to be doing some work along Main Street. IPL, I should say, is going to be doing some work along Main Street, closing at the area of 16th and Main between January 29th and through the February 2nd. We've already put some notices out about this. There'll be some traffic rerouting and that sort of thing, but if you can avoid that area between those two, I should say, avoid that intersection between those dates, that would, that'd be very helpful. And then also want to mention, you know, our snowplow crews were out quite a bit over the past couple of weeks. I think they did a good job. There's a lot of ground that they've got to cover, and, you know, I think they worked pretty hard, but right after that, then they're out there patching holes up because, you know, that's the other side of it. Hopefully, you've seen them patch holes in your area if needed, but if not, I'm going to give you the phone number to call to go to the street department so you can indicate that. The number is 317-246-4141. Again, that's 317-246-4141. And, you know, there's a lot of roads in Speedway and a surprising high amount. We only have so many people that can go out and spot and see what's out there. So if there's a pothole down your street, it doesn't mean that they saw it and ignored it. It means they probably just aren't aware of it yet. So if you call and let them know, we'd appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jacob. Item number 11, report from our Town Attorney, Bob?
I have nothing to report tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Moving on, item 12, reports from our counselors. Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Well, I don't have anything this evening, but I do have a question for Jacob and maybe Wendell on this one, in regards to the potholes. Some of our streets are obviously Marion County, so are we going to be handling some of those potholes? I know some of them are fairly bad on Indianapolis roads.
So the Indianapolis roads, we have kind of a loose agreement, I'll say, to kind of help with light maintenance. Anything that would be like a major mill and repave type work is the city's responsibility, but if it's light patching, we kind of have an agreement where our crews will go out. Is that fair, Wendell?
Yes. What we do is, we run all of our streets, the thoroughfares on our residential streets. So they're just on a route. Thoroughfares are a priority, then we move to the residential. And with folks calling in, we develop a work list off of that, and then we route the crews out accordingly to that. This, today, we had crews out this afternoon after the rain stopped, so they'll be busy all week working all of our streets that comes through Speedway.
Wendell, while we've got you, I'm sorry to interrupt Eileen, but I can maybe tag on to her question. When it comes to plowing and salting and so forth, what's our relationship with the city, those same streets, our own streets?
The same streets, it's a joint venture. They have a timeframe that they run through, and they will run their thoroughfares. We run thoroughfares and the residential's at the same time. We assess each other. They put their salt down, we come back through and put our salt down. We do plow off. That's why you'll see a lot of improvement quicker, that we get that extra truck in our district, the city truck helping us out. So we have our two big trucks running thoroughfares, and then the city truck come through and supplement what we're doing too, so.
How's our equipment, salt, and holding out? How's our equipment, salt, holding out?
We've went through some tonnage on salt because of the weather and the conditions that we've been handed since Christmas Eve, but we restocked. We've got probably about 150 of reserve from last year that we still have. The equipment, we've had issues. The crews have jumped on it, mechanics, and made the repairs, and everything's ready for the next event right now, so.
Thanks for yielding.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Good, thanks. I knew what the answer was to that, by the way, I just wanted everybody else to know because it sounded like we were taking something, and I know that Indianapolis has some of that stuff, so.
Okay.
And I know that, I'm sure he's getting a lot of calls from Georgetown Road, so that is really bad up there.
Thank you. Counselor Delaunay?
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, counselor Gary Rakes?
Just to clarify, you're talking about area north of 25th Street that the city's responsible for, city and county?
Yeah, correct.
I just wanted to thank Janice McHenry, our city, one of our two city county counselors that represents Speedway, that came to the meeting this evening. She and Marilyn do a nice job of representing us, and it's good to see them in our audience and available to us. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Gary. Vice President David Lindsey?
Nothing to report tonight.
Excellent. Only thing that I had, a little fun fact I learned this evening, was that in eight years, town of Speedway will be 100 years old. Is that right? It's pretty amazing, 100 years old. Hopefully, we'll be around to see it. So with that, I'll adjourn that at the meeting at 7:31.